Evening, I'd like to call the Select Board meeting to order from Monday, April 1st, 2024, and announce that we're going into executive session and will we return no sooner than 6:00 PM. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we enter into executive session for two reasons pursuant to general law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel police chief, as well as pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, 22FG, to review, approve, or discuss the possible release of executive session meeting minutes dated March 4, 2024, March 11, 2024, March 25, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
I'm going downstairs.
I'm going to call the Select Board meeting back to order. We were in executive session earlier this evening and we took action on Item B on two elements. So I'm also going to inform you, as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the Chair prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Is there anyone for public comments and announcements?
Paul Reedy, Great Western Road. My wife Marilyn and I are longtime Harwich residents and we are members of the Harwich Climate Action Network. This is a very small group of residents seeking to help Harwich reduce its use of fossil fuels and protect itself from the hazards of climate change. Our group is one of several town-based resident networks associated with Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative. We'd like to invite the Select Board and town employees and all the residents of Harwich to our upcoming Earth Day celebration scheduled for Saturday, April 20th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the 204 Cultural Arts Municipal Building here in Harwich. The celebration will feature speakers from Cape Light Compact and the Food Forest Initiative. There'll be a performance by members of the Cape Cod Theater Company, Harwich Junior Theater, and there will be exhibits by a number of organizations from Cape Cod's environmental community, including the Harwich Climate and Energy Committee, Pleasant Bay Alliance, the Harwich Conservation Trust, Montomoy Regional High School, and Harwich Brownie Troop, 774-77. We have a few copies of our flyer that I'll leave behind on the desk for, that include more details of the event, and we really hope the Earth Day celebration will be of interest to all the residents of Harwich, and please join us on Saturday, April 20th.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for the information. Anybody else for public comments? Chief? Deputy Chief?
Good evening. David Blankfire, Chief. Kevin Consonine, Deputy Police Chief. I briefed the Board prior to this weekend. Saturday, we had some training, and it's training that we would hope that we would never have to use, ever, but it's a sad state of society as to where we are right now that these are the kind of things we have to plan for. So it's called ASHER, which is Active Shooter Hostile Event Response. It's basically a coordination between police, fire to respond to this incident, and where after the police initial response has cleared the building or secured the suspect to a part of the building, fire department then deploys with police officers as a rescue task force to go in. What they found after Columbine and a lot of shootings is that survivable victims were dying because we were waiting so long to enter the building. So the training was put together by personnel, both PD and FD, that have had this training, Captain Leanne Smith, Officer Brendan Brickley from the Police Department, and there were definitely Chatham and Harwich Fire and Police Officers involved, but I'm not going to remember everybody. But the training was outstanding. I cannot express how proud I am of what our people did, putting them in an environment that they're not used to operating in. It was very uncomfortable to wear in body armor, ballistic helmets, and being led by police officers down hallways, but it was a phenomenal turnout, great event. I think everybody performed better than we, certainly than I had anticipated we would. We have not done a lot of this training. We plan on doing more as we go forward, and we'd be remiss if not we didn't acknowledge the Montomoy Regional High School, Scott Carpenter and all his staff that showed up. A bunch of the teachers were volunteers, were victims, so they experienced it from the other end, and the feedback that we got from everybody was phenomenal. And finally, we were supported by the Providence Canteen, which is a volunteer organization that provides fire ground rehab, brings water, stuff like that. They came down, they made food for the event, so it was just, all in all, it was a really good day preparing for something that we hope we never have to use.
Wow, that sounds pretty amazing. And how often do you get the chance, like next couple of years would you get?
So we're, the plan is now, kind of strike while the iron's hot. We did it, probably try and do two a year for the next foreseeable couple of years. As staff has turned over, you know, we have people, the last time we did it, I think it was in 2018 at the elementary school, so we have a bunch of people that never experienced it, so we're going to continue to try and do it, as well as build the command-level response between police and fire, so, because it's such a big part of the coordination, so...
That's great.
But I just wanted to brief the Board on that and tell everybody what a great job was done by the police and fire departments in town, so...
That's one, and thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm Jenny Hewitt from Brooksbury Library, and I have a few announcements I wanted to make. Next Sunday on April 7th, the Friends of Brooksbury Library will continue their first Sunday series with a musical program. This month is a duel with Amy and Mike, they're a really popular duo, and so that program starts at 2:00, no admission charge, and they always have light refreshments, so it's an extra fun afternoon. The other thing, big thing I wanted to mention is we're having an eclipse viewing event, the library's sponsoring one, in Brooks Park, thanks to Larry Burkhart, who's the Director of the Harwich Observatory. He's bringing two solar scopes so that you can safely view the eclipse, and we have purchased a good supply of glasses, but we don't have an unlimited supply, so we're asking community members to bring their own if possible. This event runs from 2:30 to 4:30, and unfortunately, there's no rain date we could schedule, so...
(laughing)
We're taking our chances with the weather we've been having. I wanted to mention one other thing, because today, now that the eclipse is a week away, we were already inundated with calls today looking for free glasses, and because there's this PR going around, which it's a national, there was a national giveaway, you had to apply last year, not every library got it, and it wasn't like a, it wasn't like a huge ton got delivered to every library. Most, I don't know of other libraries around here that actually got a free supply, possibly one of the smaller families' libraries, but anyway, so we did purchase some. We have 170, and we're not giving them away in advance, we're giving them away at the program, and if for some reason, I don't see, you know, us running out, but if we did, we would ask people to share them, and this is just kind of while you're waiting to use the solar scopes. So I would mention that if community members have already purchased glasses or plan to purchase them, they should be aware that there's a standard ISO 12312-2, which is the International Standard Recommended by NASA for viewing the eclipse, and if you're not using that standard, then you're not going to protect your eyes. So our reference staff would be happy to look things up for people and/or help them find a good supply of glasses, while they maybe can still order some. Another program we have this month is a second meeting of a new series, Tips, Techniques, and Technologies for People with Vision Loss, and that's led by our Assistant Technology Coordinator, Carla Burke, and made possible with funding from a Cape Cod Foundation grant to the Mass Association for the Blind and Visually Impaired, so that's going to be once a month, and it was very well-attended, the first session in March, and people were very excited about it. And the same day, that night at 6:30, we have our Books and More Thematic Discussion Group, and this is, this group is different than a regular book group. They, all participants are not required to read the same book. They, there's some highlighted, you know, works that are suggested, but people can read, watch, or listen to anything, and the reason I'm mentioning this one is that the theme this month is artificial intelligence, and I thought that might be, you know, of general community interest, and that's going to be led by our Technology Librarian, Jamie Thornton, so that's at 6:30 on April 16th. And finally, the last special event for adults I wanted to mention is a program called Productive Conversations Without Confrontation, and this is an online program, and it's provided thanks to our friends at Sturgis Library who coordinated it, so we're co-hosting this. It's an online Capewide discussion led by the News Literacy Project, and it's focused on helping people learn how to have conversations about current events and listen to each other. In today's, like, divided political climate, that's not easy to do, but this project is aimed at keeping conversations grounded and fact. So it should be a great program, and that's the 25th, and the link is on the event calendar on our website to register for that. And then school vacation's coming up. I won't give you the blow-by-blow, but like some of the major programs we have are, there's a Costume Day on Tuesday, where we're going to have all kinds of supplies for kids to create some unique costumes, Lego Day, we're having a kids tea party on Thursday. On Saturday is our big program, is Science Storytellers, and this, there's an interactive story, so it kind of features the best of both storytelling and science, so it's interactive story with science demonstrations and opportunities for the kids to participate, and that is for pre-K through elementary school, but all ages are welcome, and again, no registrations required, but we do start giving out free tickets at 2:00. And finally, I have a facilities announcement. The library roof project is poised to start, it's been poised to start for two weeks now, but when the monsoon ends, then the project will get going. It's supposed to take a week to two weeks. The contract is using a portion of our parking lot, so, but there's still plenty of parking, and so I just wanted to let the community know that if the parking lot's full, there is more parking behind Town Hall and at Brooks Park, and so I'm happy to say I'm not managing this project, just reporting on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jenny. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What Jenny said is our first two items, so we don't wind up stepping on the headlines here. I just want to remind everybody, it's not really apparent, as you're looking at a solar eclipse, what's happening, so if you don't use the proper ISO glasses, or if you don't use any glasses at all, it's not simply it's going to hurt your eyes, it could cause you to go blind, so please don't do that. Go to the library, get the appropriate glasses, but don't look directly at it.
Thank you, Don. Jeff, you had public announcement.
I do, thank you, Madam Chair, but I, I see we do have somebody from, I was going to pinch-hit for Carolyn, but Reagan here, and I would absolutely like to turn this all over to her, so...
Okay. Hi, Reagan Wild, Program Specialist 2 at the Harwich Community Center.
I'm here for Carolyn and her behalf. I'm just going to go through the programs that we have coming up for the month of April. This Friday, April 5th, we're doing another community spaghetti dinner. It was very popular last time we did it, so we're bringing it back. This time, we're going to add a little twist to it, we're going to do a trivia night as well. If you come to the spaghetti dinner, you do not have to do the trivia, but it is going to be available for anybody that wants to come. Free event, open to all ages. We serve from 5:30 to 7:00, or until we run out of food. So again, I feel inclined to say Carolyn and I are not the ones cooking, so...
(laughing)
Feel like I should put that in there. April 11th, which is a Thursday, we're going to do a ping-pong tournament at the community center. We've already had a bunch of sign-ups for it, so it's going to be another free event, open. We are asking people to sign up ahead of time, just so we know how many people to expect, but we're just going to team people up and let people, all skill levels are welcome to come, and we'll have someone there who is a little bit more experienced with ping-pong that can show people the ropes, and we're going to teach people the rules. And then for April Vacation Week, April 16th, we're going to bring Mad Science back. That's always a very popular one with the families. That's going to start at 2:00, and this Mad Science topic is the flight stuff, so flying things. It will be inside, though. And then on April 18th at 2:00, we're, I'm really excited about this, we have a local author who wrote, I don't know if you guys have heard of Birds in My Closet, Pamela Purdy wrote this wonderful book, and she is offered to come read it, and then she's going to do a craft, so it'll be at 2:00 in the multipurpose room at the community center. I'm just going to read the little blurb about it so people know. "It was inspired by an experience that the author's husband had when they adopted their son of black Vietnamese heritage. Age 5, he squirreled himself away in his closet feeling less vulnerable, having slept in a mad Vietnam." So she speaks of that experience and how he got through that, and she's going to do a really beautiful bird craft afterwards. And again, that's just a free drop-in event, everybody's welcome, the 18th at 2:00. Also on the 18th, just for, to give parents a little something to do with their kiddos and families of all ages, we're going to do a game night, 5:30 to 7:30 will be a drop-in event. You can just drop in for free. There'll be puzzles, board games, card games, all kinds of things set up. April 19th, which I think is the Friday of April Vacation, starting at 5:00, we're going to have a Moving to the Music for Kids, grades 4 through 8. It's like an exercise class with a twist, with a lot of dancing and movement with Alice, who is a big friend of the community center, and she's great with the kids. So that's grades 4 to 8, also free, it starts at 5:00. April 26th, we're doing Family Fun Friday in our gymnasium. This is a free event, and starting from 5:30 to 6:30, there'll be stations set up in the gym, different games, like kind of organized activities for families, and then from 6:30 to 7:30, we're just going to have open gym time for Harwich residents. I think this is the last one. April 26th, the Cape Cod Military Museum is back for another lecture, Cape Cod and the Cradle Invasion with Joe Yuckna. This has been a very popular event, and it's gained a lot of traction. We have a lot of people that have started coming on a regular basis, so he's great. It's a slideshow and a talk, and he does a great job, so...
Quite a bit going on at the community center.
Can I jump in real quick, Madam Chair? So, thank you, Reagan, I'm so glad you're here, and I didn't have to do that, but I had the opportunity to meet Pamela Purdy and purchase the book. Pretty amazing story, more amazing person. So if you have the opportunity on April 18th from 2:00 to 4:00 to meet her and listen to her, it will be worth your time and your effort. She is pretty phenomenal, and then, as is the book, and then...
Oh, yes. I did...
We're all going to Alaska.
I missed that one, yes, and that's the April 30th. I'm sorry.
Do you want this?
I didn't grab that when I left. No, I got it.
Okay.
Betty Trummel is coming, and she's, she's a teacher who has all kinds of experiences traveling, and she is going to be doing a series of talks at the community center. The first one she's going to be doing April 30th, 5:30, am I right? 5:30?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was...
April 30th, 2:30 to 3:30.
2:30 to 3:30, apologize. Her first talk is going to be on her travels in Alaska. She's got great slideshows and information, and she's excited to share it with the community, and I think she'll be answering a lot of questions about people who have traveled to Alaska or want to travel to Alaska, so that's going to be the kickoff, her first, her first talk, so...
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yeah, your pen's down there.
Good evening, everybody. Patrick Gott, East Harwich. So tomorrow morning, 10:00 will be our first public forum to discuss citizens' petitions, housing, pesticides, fertilizers, and pool, so please come. It's an open event, 10:00 at the 204 Sisson Building upstairs in the library. That's the first of three. The next will be on the 18th, that's a Thursday, and then finally the 28th, that's a Sunday, so... The Thursday one will be at 4:00, and the Sunday one will be at 1:00, but tomorrow, 10:00 at the Sisson Building. And I have two questions, so...
Just before you go to your questions, they're all at the 204 Sisson, right?
Yes.
Just wanted to make that point.
Right. All at the 204. In February, I submitted a petition to add to the town election warrant. Do you, can you tell me if it's on it? If so, great, if not...
And is it the pool?
Yes.
To be on? No, we're not, it's not on the, on the warranty, you're saying, or on the ballot?
On the ballot.
The ballot, no, it's not on the ballot.
Can we have a...
Because there's already a petition article that you have, and then we'll see what the feedback is on that.
My thought on that matter is there's different groups. Some may vote on the ballot, some may go to town meeting and vote. They may not be a parallel identical group, so I was hoping to have both voting groups polled and questioned whether or not they'd like to have a pool.
At this point, it's not on the ballot.
That's disappointing. I wish we had discussed it. Okay, second question. I submitted to you a question that I've, was reading the Association for Preservation of Cape Cod, APCC, and they said the Cape and Islands Protection Fund is being presented to all the towns within Cape Cod, and it needs to be voted on. Do you have any more information? Who's voting? What's voting? How...
So the, yeah, I don't have any more information on that. I don't know if you do, Joe. Do you have any information on the Association to Protect Cape Cod and the reference?
Cape and Island Protection Fund.
Fund, right.
So not the Association, not the APCC, but we did receive notice, I think it went to the Board...
Yeah, about the...
From the Mass DEP on the... Right. Intended use projects that have been approved.
Right.
I didn't get the reference to voting, though. It was in their comment section that towns would be voting, and I just didn't understand voting.
What Mr. Powers is alluding to is there is a Clean Wars Management Board, and the intended use projects go through that, and then funds get allocated to the various towns, and I'm the representative, and there is no public ballot for that particular thing, but Harwich did indeed get a fair share of it, and it continues to get it.
Excellent. Good news. Good, good. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody else for public comment or announcements? Hearing nobody, we will go on to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we accept the gift of a memorial bench to be placed at Long Pond Beach.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Any discussion? Is there any, does anyone have any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0, Joe.
I also move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes for March 19th, 2024, and March 25th, 2024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, I'm not going to vote for them. I'm asking you to hold them back because there's a continuing trend. It's not just these minutes, but the minutes I asked for the last time, and looking back, it happens an awful lot. There's like a paragraph of exposition about what was presented to the Board, and I know my own part, it doesn't cut it, but it just says, "And then there was a discussion, Mr. Howell said something." It happens to every one of us, and unless you pick up the minutes and actually know what the heck that discussion was, you have no idea from the minutes unless you go back to the video of it, and I'm trying to stop that trend. It doesn't have to be a transcript, but it definitely has to say more than a discussion involving Mr. Handler happened.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'd support that if John feels that way. I'd be comfortable supporting that, so do you want to remove the second, and then my motion, or...
Removed.
Then I'll remove my motion.
And just take note, I did the same thing for you in the last seven minutes, I added a little bit more context.
No, you certainly did, and I appreciate you taking a good, close look at all of it, so...
So we'll bring those back.
I'll try to fix them.
Thank you.
So now, 2024.
I move to...
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Yeah? Item five, correct?
Yes, right.
Okay. I move to vote to approve and execute the 2024 Annual Town Election Warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Don?
That was Jeff before. Yeah, just to be clear, that's, as we previously voted on our petitions, that's what we're putting forward.
Right.
That's right.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0.
And Madam Chair, there are three originals going around on that, that we'd ask the Board to sign all three.
Okay. Next item?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we vote to accept, recommend, and place the following articles in the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. First, Article 52, Supplemental Appropriation for Phase III Waste Water Management Plan Construction Costs, and Article 53, Fund a Sewer Assistance Program.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Michael?
The only question is, and I know it's late in the game, can we renumber these, Joe, and put the Herring Fisheries article last as it normally is?
Certainly, it would be helpful to have a vote to that effect, and so I can swap it out.
Okay. Can I get a...
So moved.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0.
And that was to accept, recommend, and place 52 and 53, and renumber Herring Fisheries to the end.
And renumber. That's right.
That's correct. Thank you.
So it'll be 50, 51, 53, and 54 that will be changed.
Thank you.
In support of what Michael just said, this has historically always been the last article, so it's important to have that.
Okay.
I move to vote to close and execute the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
From the Office of Redundancy.
Michael?
Yeah, just give me a second. Article 51, Joe, can you just remind me what Article 51 is? Clickers? Electronic voting?
Yes.
Thank you. Yep.
Just want to, again, state my objection to this. There is no dollar amount in there. It says to raise and appropriate, but there is no estimate of cost, and I think that this is something that we should not get in the habit of bringing to town meeting.
Any other discussion? So we have a motion, and, yeah, Joe?
That would have been reflected in last week's vote, is that correct?
Just the way the article reads now, I voted no on the article itself.
Yep.
However, I just want to, I want to object to the fact that we're bringing something forward in a warrant with no dollar amount, simply a raise and appropriate.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just said earlier, for whoever's doing the minutes, that's the kind of thing I would like to make sure it's in the minutes. He's forcing a specific objection, and it really should spell it out, not just...
And I think I referenced, when we talked about this article and a dollar amount, I was asking if we were going to lease or initially purchase, and I think we talked about leasing them, but we were going to get more information and get...
All of which should be each minute's, the...
Right, but it's in our, so it's in here, and so we're voting to close and execute the 2024 Annual Meeting Warrant. I think by town meeting will have a figure.
Yeah, the only point I would like to bring up is with respect to the capital plan, and I'm shooting from the hip here, so forgive me. I think that there's been enough discussion that I've had with residents and the public regarding the removal of, or the so-called removal of some of the items on the capital plan, and my interest here and now is to make sure it's understood that I would feel more comfortable seeing some kind of narrative, and again, I'm, again, shooting from the hip, some kind of narrative to let the people who are very concerned with certain items of the capital plan being removed, that this Select Board, as far as I know, is not removing these items from the capital plan entirely, and that I view it more as a strategic effort to fund these items in the fall at the town meeting. Now, one person has suggested to me a pretty interesting idea, which would be to put a side column with an asterisk in our warrant that says these items are going to look to be funded in the fall town meeting, so that the voters don't feel like they have been arbitrarily removed and forgotten. So that's, that's my point, and I'd like to certainly open a little discussion if the other Board members feel so inclined.
Joe?
Under Article 16, which is adopting the plan itself, language can be added to the explanation if that's also a preference.
To me, Joe, and thank you, that, that would make me feel a lot better as to clar... To me, Joe, and thank you, that, that would make me feel a lot better as to clarifying what the intention of this board is, because I think there's some misinformation out there, and I think it's important that we clarify.
So moved.
Okay.
Well, that was easy.
And Don?
Yeah, just so everybody's clear about this, and we've had, we've gone down this road a few times, something that's in the explanation is not part of the warrant. If the table had an asterisk, that would be in the warrant. They're not the same. An explanation is not considered part of the article.
Michael?
I'm, to Jeff's point and to Joe's suggestion, I'm willing to support that. I think we've talked about this. Nobody on this board has said that they don't want to do the project. Town Administrator, in my mind, has done a great job explaining it. We have committed to and support bringing it back in the fall, and I, and I don't, there is some that don't trust that explanation, but I'm, I'm comfortable with it. So Jeff, I would go along with the comments, but as far as changing it and adding back, I don't see the need.
Thank you, Select Board Member. Can I? Please, no.
No, no, go ahead.
No, no, please.
So I just want to point out, too, in your packet, you know, was the information on all the different votes to support Brooks. I think it's very clear, and I think we're at 3 million, and this would be another 1.1 that we're talking about at a special town meeting. I don't think there's one member of this board that doesn't support Brooks Academy, and, you know, currently what we're trying to do is put together a capital plan that, that achieves what we can achieve with the monies that we have, that we know. So then we're going to go back in the fall, and the hope is that we'll be able to fully support. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to say more about this later, but I'm looking at our August 7th meeting, where there was an amendment to the Spencer Group, which actually point-blank said that it would be helpful to show progress on a plan to be able to ask for an exemption for opening the building, and that absent that, there's some considerable doubt about whether we began to that by the state. Secondly, if we do this this way, we will absolutely be required to amend the capital plan that we, that we don't know that we're even holding a fall meeting, but amend the capital plan by two-thirds vote to put it back in, just so everybody's clear about that.
Sorry, so, so let me ask this then, as a, as a freshman here. If we hypothetically were to move this to 2026, as you brought up, I believe, last meeting?
As a fallback position.
As a fallback position. That would prohibit this board from acting on it and trying to fund it in 2025?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Okay.
If you wanted to move anything around in the capital plan, according to Mr. Giorgio, it would have to be a vote within the same fiscal year by a two-thirds vote. So either way, that's why I advocated initially, and I don't want to lose track of what I had said. Initially, I'd asked for it to be zeroed out, but contained in the capital plan, but not funded by an article in this town meeting, because the only thing that would have had to happen then is you don't amend the capital plan, you just fund it in the fall. Now, we're going to, you're going to be obligated in either '26, or by taking it out to have a two-thirds vote to put it back in the capital plan before you can even fund it.
But a follow-up to that, you're going to have to amend the capital plan if put back in on town meeting floor as it is. That's why we had this roundabout discussion a week ago, which is you're going to amend it either now, or you're going to amend it later.
That's not true. Absolutely not true. If it was in this plan and not funded, you were not amending anything. You're just voting on the funding in the fall.
So at the May town meeting, when we're voting on something, you're saying that we would not amend the capital plan, knowing that at that town meeting, we did not have that money in the budget?
The capital plan stands as a plan. The mechanism to fund what is in the capital plan are individual articles. If this is in the capital plan as for '25, as an item recommended for 2025, and there is no funding mechanism, it is still in the plan as of October, and you could fund it at that point without amending the plan. If you take it out, then you are obligated to amend it either way by fall.
Understood, but at the same token, we've had lengthy discussions in the past about the capital plan and what it is in your mind and what it is in my mind. So I'm just going back to that, which is now I'm hearing the capital plan can be a work in progress, but in the past, that hasn't been the interpretation. So I'm going to defer to Joe unless another board member has
No, I'd like to hear the town administrators' take on this.
I would like you to also ask at the same time about that August 7th action, because it specifically references without a show of progress towards a lift, that it's unlikely that we're going to get any relief towards the occupation.
So that's already an agenda item. You're going to get an update. That's C under new business.
Got it.
Which is related to some of that. So Joe, back to the capital plan, and the fact of the discussion we had a week ago, which was to, to keep it at the zero versus go back and then go back in the fall.
I don't know what the question is to me. If, I mean, I'm looking at Appendix C, and maybe if we look at that and describe in detail what you're looking to add, I think you can add just about anything you need to your appendices and your explanations, but if the board wants to go in a different direction, it's the board's warrant.
Let me add this. There's also two other, maybe three other
Right.
Okay, there's golf.
Two others.
Golf and fire, golf
No, golf and Chapter 90 roads.
Golf and Chapter 90 roads.
Right.
That are also following this same
Madam Chair, can I ask you to ask the crowd to talk outside and not
Sure, anybody holding any conversations, if you want to continue, please step outside.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back, so, sorry.
What was I saying?
You were saying about the other two items that also are
There's two other items that are following this same path. So, yeah, I'd like to hear from our TA.
So I think what Joe was saying is basically our discussion about the asterisk noting that those items would come back to a fall town meeting, rather than put them back in the plan, but to that point, it's the board's capital plan, so it's up to us, and he'll do as instructed. So ultimately, it's kind of the same conversation we had a, a week ago, which is whether or not we want to put a dollar amount in going into May town meeting, or do we want to stick with an asterisk to explain that we have these three items we currently don't have the, the funds for, and that we were planning on bringing back in the fall, pending funds. So if we want to take a different action, then we need to do that. Otherwise, we can move on with the action that we just took in terms of closing it out, to close out the, and execute the 2024 Annual Warrant, which is ready to go. How do we want to proceed?
Well, since I brought it up, I, I'm, I'm feeling like there's a level of comfort that we're going to be able to achieve the goal that needs to be achieved from the standpoint of all three of the articles that we need to fund on the capital plan. So as Select Board McCaskill mentioned, I'm willing to continue along with an asterisk, an explanation, something for the public to understand that these three projects have not been dropped from our capital plan.
Right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Three, one.
And I understood that motion was to accept the warrant.
Yep.
Thank you.
To close and execute the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. So now we're on to new business.
And Madam Chair, if I could, on that one, there are seven originals. I'd ask you to sign as many as you can for that one.
And do we, do you want any explanation here, or do we want to just go ahead and have a vote on the Ed Spelman Temporary Treasurer Collector?
Ready for a vote?
Get a motion. Okay.
I move to, I move to vote to appoint Edward Spelman Jr. as Temporary Treasurer Collector.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, and then B?
Madam Chair, I'm interested in having a discussion on holding a public forum on annual town meeting warrant articles.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
So in terms of this item, we had discussion about different articles and whether, you know, that would be helpful to have a public session, so out of that, thought we would expand upon that to say, you know, we could help, we could decide as a board to have a public session to talk about any articles that the public might have questions on. So in that regard, I guess, you know, looking for what your feedback is on that and timing, et cetera.
I'll, I'll open. I think it'd be a fantastic idea to hold public forum for all warrant articles. Information to the public is extremely important, at least to this board member, I'm sure to the rest, so I'd, I'd support that 100%.
Right. Michael?
100%. I, I think we should keep it as an open topic for the next amount of meetings until town meeting and just set aside a block of time. We've done this in the past.
Right.
Maybe a half dozen to a dozen articles want to be talked about, and I know that the, there's seems to be a growing number of people that aren't, aren't as interested in some of the petition articles going forward, so they, they would like to have their day in court, for lack of better words, on their own science and, and a differing view of the petitioners. So I know that those are topics. I think we should keep the budget on there, capital projects on there. See no reason why not having an open agenda item every Monday night for discussion on warrant articles doesn't make sense.
Well, we can certainly, we can certainly do that, and I think also what's being looked at here is, you know, Voter Information Committee is to do a fantastic job at educating the public and, and holding different things on channel, well, Harwich Channel now, and et cetera. So I think unfortunately, we don't really have that anymore, so it would be good if we could, we'll keep it as an open agenda item and decide if not, if we want to dedicate, maybe we'll, maybe we'll field that out as we go, is how many people are asking, and then we can figure out a date and a time prior to town meeting to have something if we needed to. Jeff, and I'll be right to you.
Real quick, Cindy, sorry. I'm also in the process of scheduling my next office hours with Select Board Member McCaskill. It was supposed to be for the 16th, but I understand now we have our board meeting on the 16th, so I'm going to reschedule that and let the public know, and that's another opportunity to come and sit in a smaller setting with one or two of the Select Board members to answer any of the questions you might have regarding the warrant, so.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Cindy?
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. This is something that the chamber, along with the Select Board and the town administrator, have done on a regular basis at 400 East, which is open to anyone that would like to come. We provide at a cost to the individuals coming, but there is a buffet at 400 East, and we go through certain warrant articles that are popular. This is something we've done for a number of years, other than, of course, COVID years. Certainly, that is something we can still continue to do. We get a nice crowd of about 40 people, have an interactive conversation, so certainly if that is something you'd like to do, I will look into that.
That'd be great.
All right.
Thank you, Cindy.
Madam Chair, Richard Waystack-Harwich. Years and years ago, I'm showing my age, we used to hold a public forum, and it was with, actually, the chamber, but at no cost, and it was televised live on, at that time, Channel 18, and it was just open to everybody, and it was just an articulation of the articles. It was not a debate. It was just explaining with the articles, and we brought in every, either department head, or board, or committee that was involved, and it was televised live, and it was a great event. It was about two hours, and no discussion. It's not a debate. That remains on town meeting floor, but, and I love my chamber as, as a member, but if there are those who maybe can't afford or don't want to go out and spend a dinner, that would be a wonderful way to do it with the cooperation of the Harwich Channel.
Thank you, Richard. Any other discussion on that item? So we'll keep it as an agenda item moving forward, and then we'll decide if we're going to have an event like Richard just mentioned, as well as Cindy's event.
So if I'm, sorry, if I'm hearing you right, Madam Chair, we should probably think about picking a date.
We should, but I
Sooner rather than later, if we're going to hold any kind of outreach.
So going back to that, I guess we'll look for an evening so that more people could attend, or obviously watch live, if we can work that out.
Okay.
And, yeah, and the best place in the Griffin Room, yeah. So that's where we're going to look to do that. So I guess at that point, I would say maybe we should look at a Wednesday night?
Sure. We only have a few of them left.
I know. So there's, I think we're not going to do the 10th, 17th, the 24th, or we could have it May 1st, right before town meeting.
I'd say the 17th or the 24th. Give people some time and
Yeah, okay.
Follow-up questions can come.
All right, so we'll, we'll figure that date out. Just everybody vet those two dates, and then let me know which one works best.
Madam Chair, if I could, if you're talking April 17th, that is school vacation week?
Oh, right.
So I do know some staff are on vacation.
Yeah, that's a bad day, right?
Move that we do it on the 24th.
Yeah.
Second.
Just do that. 4/24, okay. Moved and seconded.
Time to be determined?
Yeah.
Later?
Yeah, we'll figure out the time. Probably 6:00.
And we'll double-check to make sure that this room is available for that time?
Right, that's another point. Yeah, so we may need to revise date, but if Griffin Room's available, we'll do it on, on the 24th, probably at 6:00, but I'll confirm that. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, Joe.
Thank you.
On to the next item. If you would go ahead, Joe, and give us the
Thank you. Yes, as was alluded to before, what you have in your packet is a memorandum that I provided, and it is meant to follow on Select Board Member Howell's question posed under Select Board Report last week regarding whether or not it's possible to get a waiver allowing access to the main floor of the building, and then secondly, responding to the Chair's directive to provide a narrative on funds provided to date. And so I can certainly go through that memo or, or answer any questions.
I think if you just want to go ahead through the memo and for the public.
So with regard to the question on whether or not it is possible to get a waiver allowing access to the main floor of the building, based on that, I presented that question to our Building Commissioner, and he indicated that the waiver, so-called, would be known as a temporary occupancy permit. He then provided the definition of that under the State Building Code. He also expressed concern, which I do share, on the question of liability of having anyone in the building before the renovation project has concluded, and he indicated that the standard operating procedure on providing temporary occupancy is predicated on knowing to a high degree of certainty as to when the project would be completed and the building then therefore in full compliance with State Building Code. So that gets to the first part, and then the second part gets to a question on funds that have been appropriated. So based on that directive, Madam Chair, I took that to understand any actions beginning in 2019, which you may recall was Article 41, and that article sought funds for a structural engineering study pertaining to the foundation of the building. So building off of that date, there were four other articles of varying purposes and dollar amounts, and as you've alluded to, Madam Chair, the total appropriation is $2,595,000 with just over a million left over, and the million left over comes from Article 27 of Annual Meeting 2023 and Annual Town Meeting 2023, Article 47. And then I did talk about the question regarding what's referred to as the present lift versus the limited-use lift access or Lula lift, if you'd like me to cover that as well.
Yeah, would, would
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to, to that question, I met last week on site with the Building Commissioner and the Facilities Maintenance Manager. During the site visit, we discussed the present lift, which is a staircase lift, which is non-functional. According to our Facilities Maintenance Manager, the town's project consultant, Doug Manley, Spencer Preservation Group was hoping to rely on that lift to gain access from the, acceptance, excuse me, from the Architectural Access Board while the town seeks funding for the fiscal year 2025 capital outlay request of 1.16 million, which included funding for a, quote, "limited-use lift access or Lula lift," among other expenditures. Facilities Maintenance Manager informed me that, that the consultant, informed the consultant, excuse me, that the current lift is inoperable, yet the consultant should still proceed, seeking the town's waiver request from the Architectural Access Board as soon as possible.
Thank you, Joe. Any discussion on that report? Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is why I'm really frustrated, and Jeff, when
This is why I'm really frustrated, and Jeff, when you hear this, you'll understand why. August 7th, and I'm quoting from the recommendations from the contractor that was just quoted. It says in this memo that you can seek the variance application. In some instances, where compliance causes a financial operational hardship, the board may grant a time extension, allow the owner to bring the project into conformance. But it does, it talks about submitting this with a cost estimate and a timeline. I don't know about anybody else's timeline, but somebody can refresh my memory. When's the 200th, 250th anniversary here? This was discussed in August, and I know two Chairs had told me, because I was liaison to the Brooks Academy Commission, that administration had told them that they were prohibited, as a commission too, from being in the building. And eventually, that was lifted, but not the public. This is not, this is not a new issue. This issue is coming up on a vote that we took to actually pursue getting that temporary occupancy permit. It's coming up on a year this summer. So what promises that we could make that would hold water really depend on my thinking, on what we promised in the past and what we've done. I'm just extremely frustrated that we're at this point, and everybody's pretending it just became a problem. It did not just become a problem, it's been a problem.
Well, I think we also have another item that needs to be addressed in the sense that the Spencer Preservation Group, which I believe is the group that drafted-
That's what I just quoted for.
Right. But what I'm saying is that that was not submitted, to my knowledge, to the Architectural Access Board, which needed to be completed.
That was our contract with them.
Right. So they haven't done that.
But that was our contract with them. We didn't follow up.
I don't understand that comment.
I'm super frustrated.
Any other?
I guess I would just ask for clarification. What does "we didn't follow up" mean?
Well, we have, we have a contracting office. That's not just to procure things, it's also to administer contracts and to default them if things aren't going right. We paid, I'm presuming we paid the money. I don't know that for fact. Do you know that we paid?
I do. We did.
Okay. But was there an application submitted? Do you have a copy of it? Do you know?
The vendor-
From the August vote?
No, the vendor did not submit to the Architectural Access Board as directed by the contract and by our primary project manager. They had conversations in the fall about that. They talked about that other lift, and whether or not they, he may be able to rely upon that. And when I had the conversation last week with staff, the consultant informed staff that they thought it was already taken care of by the consultant. It was not.
And the reason I'm concerned about that is, if we start today and ask for that variance, it says from their own, quoting again from the information from the packet on August 7th, "For this type of variance, cost estimates for the changes must be included in the application." So we'd have to include the cost estimates and exactly when we're planning on doing it, which there is no exactly when we're going to do it.
Well, that was going to be, sorry. Go ahead, please.
I'll just follow up on my question. Thank you, Joe. So shouldn't the frustration be directed at the consultant? The town did what the town was supposed to do, but shouldn't your frustration, because it seems, at least from where I'm sitting, you're frustrated with the town?
No!
The town's like the architect.
No. As a matter of fact, I brought this issue up more than a month ago here. I asked, I asked, that's the second half of this, does it have a certificate of occupancy? And if not, have we pursued the variance? This is not new for even this month for us here. We were on notice that, I was concerned particularly about whether we had one or whether we were pursuing one. And a month has, more than a month has transpired, and we have, now we're here with a report. We finally got somebody to go over and look at it, and we finally had somebody looking at the paperwork and the trail and realized, oh, gosh, we didn't put in for the variance. That's, that's on us, here too, because I brought it up.
Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, if I may, I might just be seeing this a little differently. I hear what you're saying, Don. Respect everything you're saying. But don't we have a funding issue? And if we need to have a time, estimated time to completion, how, how would we ever apply for anything when we're staring at a funding issue to fund the work that needs to be done on this amazing building of ours? I'm, I'm asking because I, maybe I'm missing something there.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this, it's kind of a self-created emergency, and I understand what you're saying. Even if this had some certainty for fall town meeting, which it doesn't, it's just a promise right now. But this should have been submitted because the capital plan at that time had that money in it. As we, as we went towards the end of the year, we put that in the capital plan, and it had a number. It didn't have zeros. We could have been submitting the request for the variance at that time. Right now, I can assure you that if this thing is put off to the fall, you're not talking about opening that building until at least the summer after this one, the 251st anniversary. But it's, it's like it didn't happen until this past week. And I'm just saying to you, my frustration is born out of the fact that this was an evolving problem, in that we, that people knew that we had a problem, that we did not have an occupancy certificate, and that we didn't take the appropriate steps or follow up. Because to Michael's point, if we issue a contract and no work is ever done, we'd be issuing them a cure letter and say, if you don't finish this, then we're going to default. But I don't know that anybody followed up on this until just recently. That's my concern. That's why I'm upset.
Well, I would also go back to the question on, you're upset, but you don't sound upset at the vendor. So you sound upset only at process. Because at this point, it is what it is, and we have to move forward. It hasn't been submitted, they've been instructed to submit it.
The vendor is our agent, and we'll set it at everybody.
At the same time, it hasn't been done, it's being submitted, so we have to go forward. So the only way we can go forward is that moving forward with the dismissal to the Architectural Access Board to seek a variance doesn't mean it will be granted. They're submitting to request one. So we need an answer for that anyway, and back to Jeff's point about the funding. This refers to the FY '25 capital budget that we're talking about not having funding for.
Are we looking at the same letter I am, because this goes back to August, not the one we just got?
This, this talks about submitting, yes, the letter that, and Mary, I believe, signed, Mary Anderson, former Select Board Member and Chair, signed that. And then they, meaning the vendor, were supposed to submit. You just heard our Town Administrator explain that there was miscommunication back and forth, and that they did not submit. So that's a fact, and we need to move forward. Again, it's a request to the Architectural Access Board to grant a variance. A variance is a variance for a reason. Doesn't mean it will be granted. It's not automatic. But having had that conversation, moving forward, it then says that the fiscal year 2025 capital plan was the way it was going to be funded. So we're back to the other discussion we talked about earlier, about what we have and what we don't have. So, so regardless, we have this issue, it's an update, and it's moving forward. What more can we do, is my question.
It's moving forward as of this week. Again, shame on us. Shame on all of us.
Okay. Michael?
I just can't help myself. What's the, one, there's 1.1 million dollars that hasn't been spent yet. What is the 1 million dollars left over from annual '23 town meeting warrants that could have been re-appropriated if anyone brought that before this board to fix the elevator and get a, get a, right? Well, see, we can point to Joe all we want. It's, this isn't on Joe. And matter of fact, Sean Libby and Joe should be thanked because they took two years of projects in out-years and moved them forward with a funding source at 1.160 million. And nowhere in any of this conversation or any of these emails that were getting drilled down, anyone's even acknowledged the fact that the Maintenance Facilities Director and the Town Administrator tried to get this done. And matter of fact, members of the Commission have said to me that they're okay with the fact that we don't have the money this year. If we're going to start talking about things not getting done, let's look back, Don, eight years, and how many years of procurement that aren't done? And this building is very important, to Jeff's point, but is it the absolute most important project to this town right now? And it should be being skipped over? Because where is the frustration that I have in many, many, many other projects that haven't been started? And I compliment the town and administration and the Facilities Director for their work on this building. And shame on those that say one thing and then act another, and we end up in this place tonight, because it's turning into a headline for the Chronicle that doesn't need to be a headline, which, based on Sunday's, more to come, it'll be a headline anyway. But there should be some credit given, not just shots fired. And you know as well as I know that a past, recently-resigned person from that commission was sidestepping the project and talking to the project manager outside of where he should have been. So this isn't all on the town by any stretch of the imagination, nor should it be painted that way by the public or the press.
Thank you, Michael. Joe?
To the question that was raised a moment ago, so the total balance presently for the articles that are referenced is 1,22,628 dollars and change, 690,000 of which cannot be repurposed because it's a community preservation. The Facilities Maintenance Manager has reached out, has had conversations with CPC Committee, but those funds were identified specifically for exterior work. So the sills, the windows, the painting, and the cupola. The remainder, 332,628, comes from the Supplemental Funds Article under Article 47. A portion of that, I believe, may be used, but we were looking to use that for the owner's project manager and architect plans for the 1.16, if I'm remembering that correctly. So of the million dollars, there's less than a third available.
Thank you, Joe. Michael?
Just on that note, that was another article that was brought forward as a reappropriation by an attempt from the Facilities Manager to get this project done, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Right. And to do it in a more efficient manner, in a more obedient manner, I believe.
Correct.
Any other discussion on this item? Go on to the next item, which is D.
I move to vote to approve the revised Personnel Bylaw Classification and Compensation Table to account for the Deputy Library Director, the Human Resource Generalist, and the Seasonal Activities Coordinator.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0.
I move, Madam Chair, if I could-
Yep.
On items E, F, and G, they all relate to the same establishment, which is Pelham on Earl Operating LLC, doing business as Pelham on Earl.
Yep.
You are asked to do those three items.
Right, and hold H.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, I was going to say that.
We're holding-
Holding H, yeah.
I'll let, I'll let them-
Yeah, let everybody leave, yeah.
No, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve a 2024 seasonal common viculars license renewal for Pelham on Earl Operating LLC DBA Pelham on Earl 30 Earl Road, as well as approve a 2024 seasonal Mass General Lodge, Chapter 138, Section 12 liquor license renewal for Pelham on Earl Operating LLC DBA Pelham on Earl 30 Earl Road, as well as approve a new 2024 annual inholders license for Pelham on Earl LLC DBA Pelham on Earl 30 Earl Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chair?
Oh, yeah.
The only thing I would ask is, what we did last week was, we added language for the renewals.
Under such terms and conditions-
Oh, yes, sorry.
Were contained in the prior license.
And that was what my motion was.
That's what I heard.
And that was part of his second.
Okay. So moved and seconded.
Under such terms and conditions as-
From the prior years.
Prior years, right.
For the renewals.
And the weekly entertainment license, the-
Madam Chair, I apologize. Did you conclude the vote on E, F, and G?
Yeah, it was 4-0.
Thank you.
4-0. With that added language. And we're holding the entertainment because the applicant wanted to come in in person to talk about the entertainment part, so.
Item I?
Item I, please.
I move that we approve a 2024 weekday and Sunday entertainment license renewal for Witchmere Harbor Functions LP DBA Witchmere Beach Club 23 Snowin Road. Weekday, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM outside, and 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM inside. Live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers and patrons. Sunday, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM outside, and 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM inside. Live recorded music, amplification, dancing by live performers and patrons.
What was the language, Don?
With any language that was associated with prior-
Any language that was associated in prior licenses.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Don?
Just for public edification, is this any change in the times inside or outside from prior year? Just to get it out in public.
I don't believe so, but.
If you give me a second, Don, I'll pull that spreadsheet up. The answer today was no, but let me verify.
I don't believe so, but I am looking to.
I'm just saying, most people don't read 182 pages of backup materials, so I just want to make sure the public knows what we're doing.
I see no change.
Okay.
Okay, so moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0.
I move that we approve a 2024 seasonal lodging house license renewal for Gingerbread House, 141 Division Street. Vote, oops. And vote to name, no. We'll stop at that one.
Stop there, right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
4-0.
I move to vote to name the Town Administrator as agent for the board to negotiate with the food service license holder at Cranberry Valley Golf Course.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Don?
Yeah. Again, I'm going back to correction in a minute. They made, have we found out exactly who owns what equipment? Because that's pertinent to what it is you're doing when you go out. There's a value to whether somebody has to backfill equipment or not backfill equipment. I asked that a few meetings ago.
Joe?
So that is the essence and the purpose for this action, so that the town, you can have your agent in the room, working with other staff, going over inventory lists, and trying to determine between the two parties who owns what.
Okay.
But when we, I guess my question is, didn't we know when we entered into it, what we were giving them? Because this is a successor contract.
So we, the town, believe we're certain in our inventory. The current provider is less certain, and there was questions as to the prior provider. So I'm, I'm asking for this designation to move that issue forward on your behalf.
Okay. And just so I can be clear, I don't really feel it's, it's a burden that should be borne by anybody if they assume that they're going to have certain things in a building. So we, we really need to make, button this up, so that when we do this kind of a contract, we own this, you, you got to bring that. And then when you leave, you take that, and we own everything else. It's really important to hammer down, like, right away.
So, Michael?
I just hope we can keep the fry later.
It's your favorite.
Like, for how long?
In the popcorn machine.
But to Don's point, and with what we're voting, I think we'll get there pretty quickly.
Okay.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0. Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple contracts and an exciting appointment. First, for the contracts, I have signed on behalf of the town a contract with Sigma Health. This is an issue actually ties back to earlier, presented this evening, in both Chief LeBlanc, Chief Gilmet, and Deputy Chiefs Thornton and Considine. Sigma Health has been procured to provide comprehensive cardiac screening evaluation, and this is part of the town, through our Public Safety Official's ongoing commitment to our Public Safety Employees, to provide this helpful screening going forward, because to our Public Safety Employees, to provide this helpful screening going forward, because we want to make sure that we're providing the best information, getting the best wellness out of our Public Safety Officials. So again, Sigma Health, it's for $68,769, a contract that is, looks to go through March 1st of next year. And the funding for this is coming out of line item budgets. You may recall that this was, I believe, an enhancement of services last year, that everybody absolutely saw the value in. So we're grateful to have Sigma Health coming forward on that, and certainly helping for this worthy cause. Secondly, through the Harwich Channel, have executed a contract for WB Mason, and that is for Griffin Room Furniture Repairment Project. As you know, our Harwich Channel Manager has been working diligently on the equipment. She's now moving towards the furnishings that go along with the equipment. Specifically, we're looking at $33,140 for furnishings for this room. I think Jamie has a great plan in mind, and excited to have this part of it move forward on the furniture. And then last, but by no means least, is the personnel player that I mentioned. Happy to announce that John Losi, a Harwich resident, is going to be joining us in the Recreation Department. John's coming in to fill the role of Program Specialist III, which, as you know, recently came due based on retirement. John has a great background in recreation. I know Eric and the team are very excited to, to have him come on board, and I'm equally excited. He should be starting no earlier than April 23rd. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Don?
Just that the Easter Bunny came, it was great.
Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to say thank you to Matt and Caleb, who do just one heck of a job for us every week, and, well, of course, Jamie goes without saying, but Matt and Caleb are just, they're consummate professionals, they're all-stars, they're in here all the time, and they do their work just perfectly. So I, you know, sometimes we can overlook the ones right in front of us, even though they're behind three computer screens over there. So thank you to Matt and Caleb.
Thank you, Jeff.
I think I heard him hit his head.
Thank you, Jeff. Michael?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing, can I?
Move to you, Sharon.
Second.
Moved and seconded. He moved.
I got the second today.
Jeff got the second. All in favor? Aye.